Evening everyone, I'm Deb LeBolle, Chair of the Board of Library Trustees and today is April 26th and this is our monthly meeting. First order of business is to review and act to approve the minutes of our last month's meeting on March 28.
Excellent minutes.
Yeah, great job.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we move on, I'd like to go out of order a little bit and just acknowledge that two of our members, this is their last meeting tonight. And I understand that Joan, you've been on the board since 1991.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, you looked it up.
I looked it up. Nineteen ninety-one.
I was trying to think back, yeah.
Wow, and Nancy, you've been on the board since 2006. So...
So I will miss it, but it's time for someone else.
Well, we'll miss you, but we know that you're not far away in case we need to call you or...
But, you know, I stayed an extra time because Priya was new and I thought it would be helpful, but she didn't need my help.
She didn't need it.
She didn't need it. I said to Ellen, "I'll stay one more," she thought that was nice, but you didn't need my help.
We always need your help.
Well, thank you.
You have such a nice presence and such wisdom and wit and...
I will miss it, but I'll be involved with the friends now.
Okay.
Doesn't have as much commitment.
You'd be surprised.
I spoke too soon.
She knows how to make sense of it. And I will be only a Zoom away.
Exactly. You know, I come onto Western Massachusetts very often.
Okay, okay. Yes, you can deliver.
I go to Emirates.
And I am staying on the foundation board and also the friends for a little while, so I'm still connected.
Wonderful.
Much so, so I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna miss the trustees a lot. It's like in my blood.
When do you officially move?
Um, in two weeks.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Come and look at my house and you'll know that we're...
How long have you lived there?
Twenty-seven years.
Oh, boy.
My goodness.
So that's a challenge.
So I met our, the buyers, I actually just met them a little while ago and I said, "Be sure and get to the wonderful library and get your library cards."
Oh, thank you.
They're moving here from Lexington.
Oh, okay.
So this is just very small just for our appreciation. I did not get you a potted plant because I don't know what you can...
Oh, that's lovely. Thank you very much.
It's funny, I almost bought some tubes today and I decided, "Oh, I think I will," so now I have.
Now you have.
Thank you, yep.
Beautiful. And we'd like to honor your years, decades of service with a Sunday opening and just to also dedicate a book for all that you've done so far.
Well, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
We'll miss you. Okay, moving on, the next item is to review and act to approve the report of the directors' activities for March.
As usual, busy.
Yes.
Yeah, and we spoke about a few of these things at our last meeting. It's the hiring of the staff and our Deb and my meeting with the DEIB committee, we spoke about them that last week.
Has there been any progress on what we're doing with that?
Uh, not yet.
No, they only meet once a month.
Yes.
I think in the interim, they were going to try to contact some of the elders from the month tribe or that was what their agenda was, so they'll get back to us and if not, we'll get back to them.
Okay.
Looks good, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Ooh, too, too.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we want to look at programs and services, Director's Report of Programs and Services offered last month, March 2023.
One mistake in what I had submitted, the fifth bullet point fund lab that was from February, so it shouldn't be there.
Groundhog stays in there.
I was here one day on a Thursday because I wanted to check in with someone who hadn't come in yet, so I just sat outside here in the hallway, had a cup of coffee and watched all the little kids coming to the program here. They were so excited. They were just, and all of a sudden the doors opened and then this stream of little kids, it was just so cute to see, you know, and grandpa, grandmas, grandpas, moms, it was like, and then I listened to it for a little while, you know, and they were, it was so cute to see and it's a wonderful program.
It's wonderful, yeah. They usually have about sixty to sixty-five people.
It was busy.
At the storytimes. That's why we hold them here from the children's program, the Tuesday and Thursday morning programs.
Do they need to make a reservation or...
No, for one, one of them we give out tokens, the Tuesday storytime, the Thursday one is just to drop in.
They were dropping in.
Priya, what was the mud storytime?
Oh, that was special storytime at Lake Street Park. I don't know if real mud was involved in that.
Sounded fun. And muddy because it was raining.
It wasn't peeling anyway, right?
Such a nice collection of activities and programs.
Just a comment, I see that seed lending library has been very popular.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's wiped out, right? It was wiped out pretty early on.
Yeah, I went to look at it one day and it was like, hmm, there's not much left.
Right.
That's great.
How about the spice library?
The spice library is also... Yes, so we had the first one in April. They, the spice bags lasted till April fifteenth. So we thought it would be like the seed library, but maybe because the first spice we picked was cinnamon, which most people have had.
Yeah. But I hadn't heard of that. I thought it was really neat.
That's a good idea, yeah.
I like how you have books below that just as to how to suggest to use it. What's next month's spice?
Uh, harissa. Spice is harissa. It's an African, African spice mixture of a few spices, like cumin and coriander and some other spices.
Sounds good.
Get here early for that one.
It's a good way to try new things.
Exactly. So we provide two recipes and then the link to those new resources that we've got, you know, for online databases of recipes and cooking and all that.
Hard to bring it back though after, right? Like the seeds you're supposed to bring.
Not really.
Not really.
It's a ask, but it doesn't have to be fulfilled.
Maybe while we're on this, we can also look at the library specifics for March.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So in March 2023, the Shrewsbury Library welcomed thirty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven visitors and one hundred and ninety-four new library patrons. We loaned twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three books, magazines, movies, video games, et cetera to patrons. Loaned six thousand eight hundred and six eBooks, e-audio books, et cetera to patrons. Borrowed three thousand six hundred and twelve items from other libraries through the interlibrary loan system. Hosted eighty-six adult, teen, and children's programs with two thousand nine hundred and fifty-two people in attendance. Delivered eight hundred and eleven items via our outreach service, visiting twenty people and eighteen organizations. Allowed nine hundred and seventy computer sessions for one thousand and forty-eight hours. Accommodated four hundred and fifteen study room reservations. Provided one hundred and twenty-six free or discounted passes to area museums and fulfilled twelve 3D print requests.
Can we share that online, like, like in the, I think it would be nice, I thought, like in the Shrewsbury Facebook page or something, just for National Library Week?
Yeah. That's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, pretty impressive. Right. Any other comments about programs or activities? No. Moving on to financial and legislative to review and act upon the year-to-date report.
Is it at on target?
So the year's just about over.
I know.
And library materials, is that ninety point four percent?
Uh-huh, yes.
I think we're just coming in for a perfect landing.
True.
Yeah. Very good. And I believe we need to vote on that. Is that correct?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we need to review a library director's goals for twenty, is it twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four?
It is twenty twenty-three. I mean, we're not calling it fiscal year, so...
Okay, we're doing it on the calendar year.
I mean, it will overlap a few months.
Yes.
Because anyway, do the action plan before we do the budget. That's also goals for the library. For the budget, I submit goals, budget goals to the town manager.
You're juggling a lot of calendars.
Very excited about the first one, developing a robust maker space. As you know, we've got the ARPA funds for technology items. We've started purchasing. You saw the 3D printer and the textile printer last time. We purchased twenty, twenty-four iPads for programming use for adults and for children and some loanable iPads with apps preloaded in them and then we'll be purchasing more stuff. So what we are planning is to complement these technology items that we are getting. We will plan programs and that's, we have applied for this grant called Creative Communities. And if we are awarded the grant, we will, you know, we have already reached out to faculty from area colleges, WBI and Holy Cross, and we plan to partner with them and the organization called Technicopia in West End to do some programming. And, you know, children's programs, they already have a lot of STEM and STEAM related programs. They have infant storytime, tinker time, infant explorers, a lot of STEAM and STEM related programs. So we'll just do more, I guess. Librarians who are really excited about offering these programs, so we will develop a robust maker space. And, you know, we are hoping we will be awarded the grant, but if we are not, we can still do these programs. That is the aim and that's the goal. The next is of course the implementation of the fiscal year twenty-four action plan, which had been approved last year, twenty-two. Then community relationships, engagement with agencies, local agencies, other organizations, schools, et cetera. And we will also get the opportunity to hire a new outreach librarian. We're planning to increase the scope of that position, you know, add in responsibilities and call it an outreach and marketing librarian, so that we can do more of outreach. Again, you know, we've been talking about it in different terms for the past two years. I said pop-up libraries and then we said, we've done that on a small scale, but now with this position being open again, it'll be the right opportunity to, you know, hire someone with all those skills to do more outreach. And marketing is always, of course, increasing. Right now, all the librarians, quite a few of the librarians are sharing responsibilities with that, so consolidate that position instead of community services and marketing now to the outreach.
And gives the staff more time to do what they're really supposed to do.
Right, yeah.
When is Deb retiring?
Deb is retiring the month of August.
Okay, so we have a little time.
Yes, we have a little time, but I'm hoping to be able to, you know, advertise that position and start the hiring process in the summer so that once we hire someone, they'll have a little time to learn the things that Deb has been doing for so many years.
With these new responsibilities, will this need a change in grade with the personnel committee?
Yes.
Have you already talked to them about that?
I have talked to the human resources director. Now I've talked to the personnel committee.
Any other comments, additions, inspirations?
I also make sure that the library's goals align with the town's strategic outcome areas. Engaged and connected community.
Priya, I have a question around maker space because that's kind of like my jam. I'm wondering if you're thinking of this as, and forgive me if you discussed this last time, if you're thinking of this as a particular physical space that hosts these things? Because what we have right now is a spread of technology over different spaces. Are you envisioning it to be a cohesive space or is the preference to keep it like the 3D printers here and...
It will be, that's a good question and we have talked about it a lot. We are going to be, it's going to be like a mobile thing, so not all the equipment will be in one place. We should be able to bring stuff here, do programs here, then in the learning lab upstairs and the children's program room. So though we're calling it a maker space, we're envisioning it as being in different parts of the library.
Maker card. Card on a card. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we have an available space for it, do we?
That's what I was thinking, like, I mean, the idea is to enhance STEAM-related activities.
Yes.
But I think the lens with which we're looking at this is more programming as opposed to a space that is a maker space for all things.
Right, yeah.
STEM-ish, I mean, you could have that when you're setting up a program in the children's area or wherever the kids may be, okay.
Okay, um, so I think we need to vote on the goals for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Motion to approve the director's goals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Since it's just about seven thirty, why don't we look at the mission, vision statement?
So we, we did have a brainstorming session for the mission, vision statement with representatives from the trustee board and some of the staff members and Barbara facilitator. We created a few drafts at that time and then, you know, looking at all the input that we got from the community also through the surveys and focus groups and all that, I put together, I created this final statement, shared it with our managers and this is the final one. If, if you have any suggestions, you know...
No, I think you did a great job putting it all, pulling it all together.
The values in particular, I think, are bold, which is great. I'm all for unmuting.
I wondered if the, if either the mission or the vision needed to reflect programming? You do so much programming and I felt like, it felt like we have the space and we have the resources, but I felt like, um, I felt like it wasn't addressing this whole other component of the three thousand people who came for programming last month, so I don't know where, where that would go.
Yeah, because the mission is saying we empower the community by providing a welcoming space and access to informational resources, so, and text.
Which I guess I, my brain goes to...
So I get what she's saying, like, programming is not explicitly there. So if we, if we just did, we empower the community by providing a welcoming space.
Engaging program.
In programming and access to informational resources.
Yeah.
I think just that insert would capture what we are doing, right?
Yeah.
April?
Yes.
It's so funny because when we were working on that, that never came up.
It takes, I think, a step back.
Yeah.
Sometimes it does, yeah.
It's hard because there's so much you could include.
And we all came from a different perspective of what we wanted to see, so I think it was just assumed.
Right, and we looked at our current statements and we said, "We are doing all of this right now, but we still need to aspire."
No, it's good that someone else looks at it.
Someone said, "We continue." I said, "No, we won't use the word 'we continue,' but we still have to be aspirational."
Yeah, well, you could consider programming as part of informational resources as well.
I think that was the thing.
Probably what you were thinking.
I think saying programming is more explicit, because when you're thinking informational resources, you think of books and things that you're getting as opposed to activities that you may be engaged in.
Yep, I think it belongs in there too.
What about the word engagement?
I thought like engaging programming might be nice because you have welcoming space, engaging programming and access to informational resources.
Yeah, and sometimes you look at words that we use, you know, as part of library jargon and programming, programs is also, can have different meanings.
Yes.
Okay.
So maybe, no, but you're right though, engaging, and I add that, adding engaging programming.
Not computer programming necessarily.
Exactly, words have different connotations. Yeah, I think when we said informational resources, we meant, you know, everything that we do. Because we talked about that and we said skilled librarians or knowledgeable librarians and then we said, "We don't want to just say librarians because we bring in, you know, other experts to do programs," so we, we're a lot of the words.
I like the word democratize, but that's a big one.
I'm, I'm a little on the edge with introduce cutting-edge innovative technology because I feel it's almost a stretch for a library to be the introducer of cutting-edge innovative technology to its patrons, like are we...
What if it was just innovative?
Yeah, I think like...
Librarians are early adopters of technology.
Well, if Jordan gets to see the T-shirt.
I, I, well, I've heard about it just now and I will print myself a T-shirt that says "Cutting-edge technology" right here. I think, I, I think what I would be more comfortable with would be introduce innovative technology. I think it's the cutting edge that's cutting.
Because innovative is still, still...
Actually, I like the word cutting edge because I think we are doing that. And I think that came, and that kind of came across with the people who were talking that day, all of us who were part of that meeting, so I do like that because...
And I think, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think also, it doesn't mean that we actually have that physical thing on site, but we might have a program to introduce it, that's cutting.
Or a way to, or a way where people can go.
Access, yes, yeah, yeah. The word introduced, I think, is key.
I almost wonder if one word or the other could be taken out, cutting edge or innovative.
I'm going to...
And if you keep them both and they need a comment between.
Sorry, the author's over there. All the writer police is like, "But are we really cutting edge?"
Yeah, let me know if you want me to add something or, um, you know, later, but we just have... Hi, Barbara.
Hello.
Hi.
Oh, you have one of those owl cameras that's moving around, Janet Ray.
Thank you for joining us today.
You're very welcome. Glad to be here. Do you want me to just dig in or do you want to, you know, have any preference in your turn or what would your preference?
Sir, I'll just make one statement. When I first had my meeting, the first meeting that I had with Barbara, she said, "During this process, you will be the driver and I will be like a GPS." As if she knew me, because I have such a bad sense of direction. Definitely me and GPS and she's proved to be a valuable one. Thank you, Barbara.
You're very welcome. It's really pleasure. Okay. So what I thought I'd do is just kind of talk about what we've done so far in terms of all the various activities and the progress that we've made, some highlights of some things that we've worked during the process and also kind of what our final or next steps are associated with, with the project. And then if anyone has any questions, I'll take them at the end, but just to kind of get everyone up to speed, we launched, it seems so long ago now, our first project launch meeting was August fifteenth. So way back eons ago, we had a discussion where we spent a lot of time in September, well, August and September, kind of planning the project. What are the project goals? What is our general timeline? You know, what do we want to learn? What key stakeholders do we want to engage, et cetera? And then we went on, Priya went on to identify fifteen kind of community members, well, fifteen community members who we thought would be great assets to serve on a strategic planning advisory committee. So to have a bunch of people who represented different constituencies in town, different target groups. So that committee would be kind of a, a, kind of like a brainstorming group for us. So that we would ask various questions, get some feedback, keep them up to date, know what was going on. So all of this was happening in August, September. What do we want to do? Who do we want to engage? And let's start recruiting people to be on that committee. So then in October, we had our first meeting with that group, the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, otherwise known as SPAC. I have to come up with a better acronym because SPAC sounds so terse, but we launched the committee, we got them up to speed on what our plan was for the project. Priya shared a really great library trends presentation with them. And then we asked them to help us brainstorm some key community engagement questions, like who should we try, what should we try to learn during this process? Like what kinds of questions? Because it's always good to hear other perspectives, something that the library might find out, what do we need to know? What kinds of things should we ask? And then also asking them, who do you think the library should try to engage during this process? Are there specific community influencers or groups that we should reach out to? And then most importantly, how do we get to them? You know, I joked around with Britt, excuse me, my voice is kind of frustrating, but, you know, we can't just stand out in a corner and say, "Hello, target group, come meet us over here." We have to figure out, like, how do we kind of six degrees of separation get to groups that we might not have an existing relationship with? And that can be very challenging, so they were very generous in offering names, contact information, and there is... and there is a list that was generated for that, which I think will serve the library well going forward, even beyond the strategic planning process in terms of target groups and ways to get to them, um, through this process. So that was a great first, uh, meeting with that group in October. We also, as you may recall, since, uh, you were there, we conducted our strengths, opportunities, aspirations and results exercises. We conducted two with the staff, um, and then we conducted, conducted one with, uh, you all and some work president, library board members and some foundation board members. Um, so it was great to get that kind of input from the groups that we consider kind of closest to the library in terms of knowing, um, what the library is doing or what, you know, having an idea of what people like to see the library think about going forward, um, so we conducted those exercises. And then, we also conducted our community survey in October, uh, mid-October through about mid-November. So, um, while we were hearing from a lot of internal people preparing for that, we were also developing that survey. Um, and that was a very successful survey in terms of the volume. I don't know, um, Priya, did you share with them what the final numbers were in terms of how many people we heard from?
I did, I did, yeah.
Yeah. So, just to give you a little bit of perspective, you all heard, I'm sure that you have the numbers like, you know, eight hundred and two people, which represents about six percent of your entire community population if you look at the, you know, most recent census. Um, and that population includes those who are under eighteen, so if you look at it, you probably got more like six and a half to seven percent of the total adults in terms of Priya, which is, is very, um, awful, I would say, on average. Libraries, um, get somewhere between one, maybe two and a half, if they're really, really strong, three percent. So you all were achieved on that in, in a good way. So that speaks to how well it was marketed, how, um, diverse, you know, the various populations you got to. Um, you know, I think Priya was very, very, um, progressive in the way she looked at, we're just gonna touch everyone and we're gonna ask them to share it with everyone they know and like, you know, kind of to this ripple effect, so that was very effective. Um, I think it was the first time you had foreign language versions, you had Mandarin and Spanish. Um, we only get a couple of Mandarin and no Spanish, but I'll also say that that is very typical. This, uh, in the last few years, I've seen more libraries try to, uh, offer foreign language versions in their surveys. The first time out of the gate is not necessarily the most successful, only because if you don't have existing strong relationships with some of those foreign language groups, then you don't necessarily know to look for foreign language versions of the survey, even though you promote the heck out of it. Um, so, but it's always good to invite because we want them to feel, you know, warmly encouraged, so, um, anyway, we, we, uh, I hope to, you know, when we talk about the project review at the end of this process, you know, we can talk about ways to maybe, you know, increase that response rate, um, the next time with some of your non-English, non-dead English-speaking, uh, community members. In November, we had our second strategic planning advisory meeting and we conducted a community visioning exercise. Uh, the goal of that exercise is really to kind of help, well, we go through, we talk about what an ideal shrews group would be and we look at kind of ten key community attributes. And we literally draft a vision statement for each of those attributes. And those attributes would be things like education, housing, jobs and businesses, those kinds of things. And then after those vision statements are drafted, drafted rather, we ask people to help us prioritize which of these are most important to the community and which can the library best support and positively impact. So the goal of that exercise is to help the people understand that the library is an integral, you know, resource in the community. It's important to achieving our vision for the ideal community to use the library as conduit, a portal to help people kind of support that, those ideals that we have for the community. So again, big vision of what we want of the community and then the library is a key, uh, resource to help it make some of those things come through. I mean, like, not everything, the library can't necessarily build roads and make sure that all of the, you know, streetlights are working and everything, but certainly there, you know, even with things that might not be thought of as traditional library, um, information, sort of, the library can, you know, bring people in to provide information and our resources about these various topics and, um, issues going on in town. So, uh, that exercise again was in November. Um, and then in December, we spent a lot of time drafting focus group questions, preparing for that, recruiting people to participate, um, in the, that was, you know, getting, making sure that everyone who volunteered via the survey or other sources, you know, were actually committing to come to a specific date at a specific time. So after the holidays, in January, we conducted three focus groups. Um, and they were very successful in terms of, of, you know, every, people showing up. Sometimes you have a lot of people committed and sometimes they're not strong commitments. So it was good that, uh, we were able to get people who, even though it was, um, just after the holidays, that they are refreshed and they were ready to give us a lot of feedback. So there were twenty-four people who participated in those three focus groups. Um, and I'd like to mention that there were fifteen people on the strategic planning advisory, of which eleven of them, um, were in the community visioning exercise. Um, okay. So, after the focus groups, uh, Priya got right on track and started drafting the strategic pillars. Um, and then we had our third and final strategic planning, um, advisory committee meeting in February. Were reviewing kind of the rough drafts of those, got their feedback. Um, okay, it was good to take a pulse with people who were not necessarily library people, although they're our staff members in that group, um, to hear what they thought from an, an objective kind of outside view of what kinds of things were being focused. And I think that was, um, very helpful, um, in terms of hearing things. I think that, you know, some people had very specific ideas on what the library should be doing and they might've been thinking maybe a little more tactically or specific activities, but this kind of had to broaden their vision of, you know, what the, the library, um, into. So that was our, that final exercise with them. Um, and then in March, we got into collecting hard data or spreadsheet. Collected all kinds of information about the community, um, the, the library, putting all kinds of stats and everything. So that hard data complements the soft data or the, um, subjective data that we got through the community, through the surveys, the focus groups, et cetera. So, uh, she put together, um, you know, a community and a library infographic. Priya, I'm not sure, have you shared, shared those with the board yet?
Not yet.
You will be impressed, they are very attractive, they are very nice. Uh, infographics are, as many of you I'm sure know, are very great, uh, effective ways to communicate. Um, data is very attractive, it's very reader-friendly, you know, nice icons and everything versus lots and lots of block text. So, um, while she was working on that, um, doing those things, I was going through all of the data that we received because if you think about it, eight hundred and two responses, that's great, X number of questions per survey, X number of open-ended questions and everyone, when they were doing open-ended, had like, three, maybe five things they wanted to talk about. So you ended up with something like, and I think I counted somewhere around, when you look at all of the focus group stuff and the community surveys, like, somewhere around like four thousand data points, um, if you think about it in terms of what you collect. So a lot, a lot of information. So, um, several reports were generated from every community feedback activity we had. And then April, you know, drafting the vision, mission and value statements. Um, and I believe that you might've talked about those earlier tonight in terms of that, so that's great. Um, and so, you know, and throughout this entire process, Priya and I were meeting every two to three weeks to kind of start at the beginning of the project and kind of evolve to monthly after things kind of got rolling. Um, and, you know, we continually updated the project schedule. So I did that, you know, kind of ten-minute, um, sort of, but I'm gonna just kind of throw out some of the key things that I, um, think were highlights of what, um, we kind of learned and then Priya, please give it some things that you wanna add to this. But, um, from our community feedback, I would say that one of the general things you shared, the over, overwhelmingly that the community appreciates and values the library, there were no, what I would consider dominant or major issues identified in terms of things that really needed to be worked on. Um, you know, even for those who don't, didn't, said that they didn't visit or use the library at the time, there was no one reason why, a lot of it was, I buy my own stuff, so I don't need the library or my kids grow up, so I'm not going to the library as frequently as I would used to. But there was no majority or dominant concern to address. Um, there were things like program schedule requests, so this is very consistent with what I'm hearing with many of the other libraries that I've worked with, um, in terms of, a lot of working people want programs during evenings and weekends, especially those with children, because a lot of children's programs are focused on, you know, daytime things, a lot of that. So that was something that came up. Seniors want daytime programs. Of course, everyone wants the program that's most convenient time for them, you know, so it, and that's, so unless you're gonna have the library open seven by twenty-four and everyone's gonna have programs, you know, kind of, during the, it's hard to meet everyone's needs, but those were some of the things that came up. And I, I would say that the thing about working parents or working people in general wanting times that they can actually attend is something that, again, is kind of a trend I'm seeing across all the libraries. You got a ton of program ideas, I'm sure Priya and her staff were like, we already have more than we can possibly do with it, but hundreds and hundreds of program ideas. People are just seeking more and increased diversity of collections and programs, um, so they, you know, you can never have enough new releases, you can never have, you know, notebooks on the shelves. Um, but also just a diversity, more genres, more, you know, different things. And then there was also diversity in the sense of multiculturalism, um, and some interest in that. So those kinds of things were, were of interest to people. Improving marketing and promotion, I tell you that every group that I work with, that is in the top three, always. Marketing, you can't do enough of it, you can't hit enough people, like, I was joking around, I think I might have said to Priya, you can literally walk up to somebody's door and knock on it and say, I'm here to tell you everything about the library and they would say, I'm sorry, we're about to sit down, so maybe you need to come back. So, I mean, there is no way to kind of oblige everyone's time and schedule and, and convenience. But, um, improving marketing and promotion, some of the things that we discovered, even in focus groups, they were learning from each other as they were talking about things, like, I never knew the library did this. Or there were some comments in your showings who were like, wow, these are, there are a lot of programs here I didn't know, I'm gonna have to check it out more, because they were seeing things on the survey that they, you know, it's kind of like a push and a hold. We're pushing information at the same time we're collecting from it. So even every activities, marketing activity, and so. Interest in increased outreach and community collaborations, um, you know, want the library to be more present in the community, you know, expanding the visibility of the library beyond the physical footprint, going where the people are, those kinds of things, I think. Uh, especially with the pandemic, uh, some people are more virtually inclined these days than necessarily coming to the library. So there's an interesting kind of evolution in terms of, um, you know, people thinking the library doesn't have to be only in the building, can it go to community events and then have its presence there? Um, and, and the same way, community collaborations, more partnerships, you know, are there ways to reach out to other organizations? There were some facility wishlist ideas, but I didn't, I don't recall there being, and, you know, just kind of skipping through any major issues or concerns, it's like, we want a cafe, you know, everyone wants more study and meeting rooms to be over or whatever, but there was nothing like major, I, I think sometimes because we ask the question, they come up with things that they wouldn't necessarily even offer independently, um, but you ask the question and you give the feedback, which is good, but. Uh, one of the key things that came out from all of the different activities today is there's a high satisfaction, uh, with the staff. People are very pleased with the staff's helpfulness, their knowledge, their friendliness, availability and chocolate. On the survey in particular, ninety percent of the survey respondents rated the staff above average or excellent in all of the qualities we asked them about. Ninety percent is pretty phenomenal, um, so that is, you know, correct. Other things, um, when we looked at the SORC results, you know, the input from the staff as well as the boards, there was a lot of similar focus areas, so it was nice to see there was some synergy. And the things that were different were not off-the-wall different, like, where did that come from? How did they come up with that? There were things you were like, oh yes, well, the staff might have a different perspective about some of the things that are going on operationally than the various boards were, so there was nothing of concern, it was more, again, when you look at what the similarities are and the differences, um, it's neither group nor bad, it's just interesting to see where the synergies are. Um, so, uh, some things, just a couple of things from this, there is a staff mini-survey, like, job feedback was positive. There were no major issues, you know, identified there either. Um, but I think that what is interesting is the thing that they like best about their job, more than half of them, some collaborative, supportive coworkers in their staff teams. So not only have they, they like each other, they like the way they work together, the way that they're interacting. Um, positive patron interaction, they feel like their job tasks and responsibilities are fulfilling and that they're in a pleasant work environment and building. Um, you know, we asked them, so when you ask them, you'll get feedback, what they liked least, but there was no dominant or even majority-based issue that they came up with. I mean, there are a couple of people who are like inadequate staffing level, but, you know, that's not everyone. I, I tell you, every group, there's never enough people and they never get paid enough. If you say to someone, do you think you're, you know, paid, they'll be like, oh, I want more. So there was nothing, again, there, there were small number of people who gave those and so there was nothing of any concern there. Um, and then, I think, the biggest kind of challenges that I see from some of these is, obviously, we heard predominantly from people who are library users. Now, you know, usually that's a type of like, oh, we're gonna have to figure out how to get to non-library users, which is always something that we wanted to. Um, but I would say that, um, you heard from so many community members that that concern with your group is less than, um, that. So you heard from a dominant number of, I mean, again, six percent is, is pretty good of the entire community. Um, so, maybe that's more of a go-forward thing, like, if there are new populations you wanna reach out to, that can be something that's part of your strategic plan and to execute it versus thinking that the strategic plan project itself is necessarily gonna hit all of those, those different people. Um, but I think that a good news thing coming out of that is we did identify a lot of potential target groups, um, for you to do, do outreach initiatives, um, for our group to, to go for. So, uh, that is very typical of every group that I work with also, that everybody is gonna need not get to do something like. And that is because, is very difficult, if you're a non-user and you get a survey, you're thinking, I don't know anything about the library, what could I possibly tell them about? So some of that is, you know, what, what you need to do is a follow-up or what you might consider doing as a follow-up activity. So those are, are kind of the highlights of what we got out of it. We talked to a lot of people, we got a lot of data, you know, we got a lot of good information and Priya's been masterful in terms of kind of like, starting to summarize this down, sift it down to actual actionable things. So, um, the next steps are drafting the document, so the things that you approve, the various components, you know, the plan to, you know, put the strategic pillars and goals in front of you next month, and so you vote on that and then we'll take those things, put them in the actual document. We'll have appendices with reports and various things there. Um, and then, at, my understanding is that Priya would like you guys to vote on the plan in June and then technically, even though the plan isn't due to the MBLC until October first, you can submit it as soon as you guys approve it. So, you know, you approve it in June, you can put it in July and you're off and running. Um, so that would be in terms of the plan and then as part of the project, as I always suggest, that we conduct kind of a project review at the end, what, 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 what changed next time? So, if Priya wins the lottery and all of you all, you know, retire to a room book or something, um, then somebody can pick up the document and say, this is what they did last time, these are the things we might wanna approve on. Or if Priya doesn't wanna have to worry about remembering everything, she can pick it up next time and say, oh yeah, this is what we did. Um, so that's kind of where we came from, what we've learned along the way, and where we're going. I know it took a little more than my fifteen minutes, Priya, I apologize.
Thank you so much, that sounded much better than I could have done, it's a great summary.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Are there any questions or anything else you'd like for me before I, I let you get to the rest of your meeting?
I had a, I had a quick question, I don't know if you can speak to this, but we're, do you know what the target groups were for like new populations to reach out to? That was for the, like, next time we do the survey?
Uh, Priya has a, um, spreadsheet that we created with a list of all of those groups and particular contacts and everything. So some of them are groups like specific age groups, some of them are different populations, like by language groups or, um, you know, disability group or social services groups, uh, faith-based groups. So there is a document that has been created that has all of that information and the contacts that we received as possible con, people to reach out to, to get to them.
Awesome.
This was suggested by some of the members of the advisory committee.
That's excellent, and between the boards and the staff and like, there might be people who have actual existing connections and sometimes you can make a more meaningful.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, we, we asked people if they, and several people did offer like, a warm handshake is always better than a cold one. So that if they could broker an introduction, um, you know, the, then they presented their names. So there are people that we can call upon and I, and I encourage you to maintain your connection and relationships with the strategic planning advisory committee people beyond the strategic planning process to kind of help them, help you be library ambassadors in whatever context can, you know, be helpful to you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, anyone else?
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Priya, all right, thank you, Priya, for letting me know you needed a minute more, but have a great rest of the meeting and a great evening and, uh, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Do you wanna continue on with the strategic plan or do you feel that that was a pretty good comprehensive preview today?
Oh, I think she, she did an amazing job.
Yeah.
She summarized everything.
Okay.
She did.
It's great that you have those spreadsheets as well.
Yes.
Okay. So going back to the agenda, um, next item is facility equipment and grounds. So going back to the agenda, um, next item is facility equipment and grounds.
Um, just one thing before that, did, did, um,
Did we finish the?
Oh.
Or do we, or do you want me to make those changes and present it again instead? For the mission?
Oh, for the mission.
Um, did we, did we finalize the cutting, you, I think, Jeff, you were talking about
Yeah, I'm not sure, good question.
Cutting edge, and I think you were talking about choosing one or the, like, do we need both?
Or having a word in between, cutting edge, something and innovative.
Perhaps they both say the same thing, if we wanna think about, which is to say, does it become redundant to say cutting edge, innovative?
Yeah, it seems redundant to say cutting edge and innovative.
Innovative, yep.
Okay, uh, which one do we like better?
Innovative.
And remove cutting edge.
Okay.
And can I add that engage in programming?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome space, engage in programming, add access to informational resources.
Good.
I think the rest of it looks good.
Yep, I do too.
The only thing, this is so tricky, but in, in the vision statement, um, last few words, um, state-of-the-art communal spaces for everyone to achieve their goals. I don't know if, if, I, I guess what I was thinking is more to, for everyone to have the ability to achieve their goals. I mean, we can't say they're gonna achieve their goals, but again, that's being
But pursue, but pursue instead of achieve.
Yeah. Yeah, I like pursue.
Yeah.
That's
That, 'cause that's a good point.
Hmm, I agree.
Right.
But that is aspirational.
It is aspirational, but it's, we can't assume that, you know, we're the one to pursue them.
No, that's really true.
Yep, that's the word.
Yeah, no, I've seen, um, you know, we looked at so many other libraries, and then you think, everything sounds like a cliche after some time.
The more you look at it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, fresh eyes always help.
It really does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that first two, the goals.
Yes, I do.
Is that okay, Deb?
Yes, I think that's perfect.
Yep.
I, my only last question is the, um, is unique in the mission statement? Um, just because I feel like it's so, so specific to, to say, the unique needs of all users is like, can we, can, can like, can we, um, can we do that?
We're talking about individual needs here, huh? We're talking about individual needs, huh? That's what when we say your needs.
Or just take it out, or just support the recreational and educational needs.
Take comfort.
Okay, yeah, we can just get it out.
I don't know, I just felt like, um, it's so, you know, unique means singular, so it's like at what each person in the shade of thirty five thousand or whatever we are.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So strike unique.
Okay.
I see what you're trying to get at.
Are you okay with that, Priya?
Okay.
I see what you're trying to get at, Priya.
I did.
Right, it means there's
That's, you know, a thousand people come with a thousand different needs, and they all get met, huh?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah.
But I think that point still comes across, doesn't it, without that word? That's good.
Okay. Yeah, the word community we wanted, we wanted empower.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
She made that word, what does that word, cloud, community was the biggest of that, everyone talked about, community.
Oh, the word cloud?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Hmm.
The only other thing, yeah. And this, this, it really doesn't. Friday afternoons, we've been talking about perhaps having kids signing in. And if under values, we're safeguarding users' privacy, we're not doing that. I mean, that's kind of
We, you know, I don't think we'll have them sign in, we'll have them show us an ID that the school provides, right? Isn't that what we were talking about?
But the schools don't have IDs until you get to high school?
Yeah, I hope they
They learn that's what they're going to tell them about it.
That's what, yeah.
Okay. Like, sort of like, you need to bring your school ID?
And see if the superintendent If the superintendent agrees, and if it can be done in the next academic year.
I mean. So maybe they would even leave their ID at the desk or something, or they would just sign in with it?
Oh, they'd leave it at the desk, and then we'd have to get it back.
Yeah, that's complicated.
And then they forget it.
I mean, that's giving the staff a lot more
I, I don't think, I don't think, um, what we're talking about with adolescents is the same as what's here.
I don't either, but, um,
I think it's, I, I think that it's a different kind of
I think it's also their, their minors.
Yes, they're minors, so
You know, so they don't have all kinds of privacy that, you know, until you turn eighteen.
Right. So I think
Okay.
We are safeguarding, we are safeguarding their privacy by making sure we know who they are, so that if something happens, we can do something, or whatever. So I don't think it's the same as, we don't share those li, we don't share the list, we don't, you know, none, none of the things that you think about with privacy do we do with adolescents, except we wanna know who they are.
Yeah, and if they do something that behaviorally is disruptive, we do reach out to others, but
Yeah, right.
The others are usually their guardians or parents, so.
Right, right.
On the flip side, we, if something happens to any one of the kids, we know where to reach out to as well. I mean, with, with all the monkeying around here, if one of them gets hurt, we know
Yeah.
who to reach out. I mean, and I, if we're talking about safeguarding, we, privacy, we actually have cameras here, so there is, um, not much privacy really.
I think part of what you were after was the, like, in terms of privacy, no one can see what you checked, you can't even see what you yourself checked out if you didn't purposely save it. You know, like, I, you know, so I, I think that's maybe what you were after.
Oh, I think, I, I know the intent, but I'm just raising the, the issue related to our ongoing Fridays and Wednesdays.
You know, it makes me wonder, as we're talking about this, like, when you say of knowing who's at a program, like, in the, the children's room, the tokens, you know, and it's like, there are twenty spots for this program, and you have to sign up ahead of time. Is there any way we could do that for Friday afternoons? Like, there are a hundred spots or whatever, and they have to sign up, so, yeah, they'd have to know ahead of time. I know it cramps their social style, but it's maybe something to
And we have to check them when they come in then, right?
Right, yeah.
Again, okay, nevermind.
Yes, but they go in and come out, so maybe multiple, they just keep going up, coming back in.
Yeah.
That would be, yeah.
All right, well, that, that's really a topic for another day, and hopefully we will get together at the beginning of the summer sometime to talk about it with all the stakeholders. But I think you all answered my concerns about that, so I'm fine with that.
It's, it's almost an exception, that, you know, trying to deal with Fridays, it's almost a bit of an exception there. We still have the value of safeguarding.
Yes, right, right.
Yes, yes.
Looks excellent.
All right.
It, it looks like, this doesn't show how much work this was to make this statement, so thank you.
I know. Yes.
That's so true.
It's very messy, right?
Anytime you've done a mission statement, it's like, oh, yeah, how true. You did a great job putting it all together.
Yeah. So I think we need to go over this as well.
I move that we approve the mission, vision, and values.
As amended.
Mission, vision, statements. As amended, yes.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, moving on to facility, equipment, and grounds. Um, okay, um, the Shrewsbury Cultural Council and Selco are working together, and they've announced a celebrating Shrewsbury Culture Electrical Box Public Art Project. You've heard of it? So they've, I identified one of the electrical boxes here when you enter the parking lot here. Uh, and apparently it's been approved by the Historical District Commission.
Oh, that's good.
And, uh, they're, um, so they are asking the town, asking residents in the town, local artists, to submit their artwork, and, um, and, uh, they've identified five electrical boxes in town for the display. And, uh, the design proposals have to reflect the multiculturalism in the town. And they're going to, once they receive the submissions, they're, the Shrewsbury Cultural Council will, um, I think a representative from the cultural council, a Selco representative, and some town center development representative will get together to, uh, make the final approval of the artwork. And then the SCC will distribute stipends to the artists. And these designs are going to be put on a vinyl, uh, wrap, which is then going to be installed on the electrical boxes.
Nice.
And they're going to be tying it up with the spirit of Shrewsbury, so it's going to be unveiled in September. So that's a project, so they let us know that one of the electrical boxes here is
That's nice.
Will they be on display for a period of time, or are they
I think it will stay there.
Permanently? Permanently, type of a thing.
Kind of, yes.
Very cool.
Very nice.
That's kind of exciting. Anything else, Priya, under that?
Nothing else.
How is the custodial services going?
It's going well.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, anything under gifts and grants?
Uh, we received, uh, a note from the, from the MBLC about the second installment of our state aid. And that's forty-two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. So the whole state aid, the total funds for the state aid this year is eighty-four thousand four hundred and six dollars and fifty-three cents.
Okay.
How does that compare with last year?
Last year, we got about sixty-five thousand, so it is
Six more.
Yes, the state legislature, I think.
That's a nice increase.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything under personnel?
Um, yes, personnel, um, I sent you all the document, uh, with
Organizational.
Organizational, uh, chart. And if you look at the end of it, you know, there's a lot of information here. If you just look at the, uh, below the grid, below the table, proposed classification and title changes. So I had, um, recommended some title changes, some grade changes, um, to the town manager and the human resources director. Uh, but they recommended only some of the ones that I had recommended, and those were approved by the personnel board. So we had the meeting on April third, and, um, our library managers, who we call managers internally, now they have been, they will be called library managers, that new title has been approved, and their grade change also was approved, so they go from a grade six to grade seven. And that, um, affects, um, Sonya, Melissa, and Pat, they are the three managers. Um, and then the next one was, uh, library associate, library professional associate. Um, there only the title was approved and not the grade change. And that is for, um, uh, younger adult librarian, Annie B., Roxanne from the children's room, reference librarian Jess, and, um, Sierra, uh, digital services librarian. So that, um, the title has been approved as library professional associate, so now they are all under that, uh, title, but the grade remains grade five. The other change was, uh, the library technology specialist, who was grade four, has now been approved for grade five. And the title will be library professional associate, and that is Dana. Skewy Dana.
Good.
Uh, a couple of the administrative assistant titles have been changed to library specialist. That is interlibrary loan services, she went, and library specialist, uh, outreach services, Deb Mayo. So again, the title change has been approved, but not the grade change that I had requested. And the part-time positions were not brought before the personnel board, this time this was just for the full-time people, so, um, some of the grades have been changed, some of the titles have been changed, all the titles that I'd requested for full-time professionals.
And the grade changes are effective?
They're effective immediately, April sixth, actually, uh, just after the meeting, the weekend.
And that will be in the town meeting, in the budget part, uh, when the personnel department makes their, there's always a big personnel report
Oh, they might
takes place every year, yeah. I, I suspect this would have to be in it.
Okay.
The town meeting's not far away. I know.
Yeah. I know that you did a lot of research in terms of comparable demographic communities, and, uh,
Absolutely. Yes, yes, I did a lot of research.
So, maybe we can get the grades changed for those others that weren't, but the starting point anyway.
Yeah, next time, I keep the severe.
Yes, you do. You do.
Wear them down. Baby steps.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you, Priya, for the, I like the chart, too.
Yes.
That is very helpful.
Yes.
All right, moving on, uh, to the Shrewsbury Public Library Foundation.
Um, the foundation, um, it, uh, is looking to add to the board, actually, it's not adding. Um, we had a vacancy left by Chris Menney, who, um, left after, he was one of the original foundation board members. Um, and, uh, and we are anticipating that another person will be leaving the board in the foreseeable future. So, um, so we are, um, soliciting, uh, some possible new board members, which of course, would, we would come to this board with, um, for your, um, approval. So more to come on that. Um, the distinguished speaker series, um, the next one, we're doing one in, uh, is it May twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fourth.
Fourth. Um, and that is, um, Hank Philippi Ryan, um, who, um, should draw, I hope, draw a nice, um, interest crowd. Uh, and then, um, we're anticipating doing a second, um, lecture in the fall. So more to come on that. So, Mo and I are co-chairing at that, and we, um, we've met with, um, one person who expressed interest in the board and also, um, um, supporting financially the foundation, which is nice. And, um, we actually are meeting with someone tomorrow, I believe, as far as I know. So, um, so anyway, we're, we're trying to recruit, uh, influ, influencers, let's put it that way.
Great.
Yeah.
Good. For Hank Philippi Ryan, will there be a, a sign up for that? I'm, I'm assuming that there's limited numbers, yeah.
Is it here?
It's here.
It's just going to be here, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. All right.
Yes, yeah, it'll have a big room for that.
Yeah.
I think you will.
She's a, she's really a good speaker, so.
Okay, next is friends of the library.
It's no new updates?
Hmm? Anything new under policies?
No.
Um, okay, we are, we've pretty much covered the strategic plan Um okay, we are, we pretty much covered the strategic planning between the Barbara and the vision statement. Um under miscellaneous, we need to review letters of interest um from candidates for our anticipated vacancy. Um so you should have gotten four letters of interest. I did speak with um our town manager, Kevin Mizagar, who spoke to council about how to move forward with this. And what I was informed was that tonight, we just kind of informally talk about um the people who are interested. Do not, not gonna come up with a vote, but hopefully reach some sort of informal consensus as to um which person um we're interested in extending uh the seat to. Um we'll be meeting in a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen sometime in May. Um and between the Board of Selects, the select board, I'm sorry, the select board and the Board of Trustees, we will determine who will fill that vacancy, so out of these four people.
Is that something that the whole board?
I'm sorry?
Is that something the whole board?
Yeah, I mean as long as we have a quorum. So there's four people of interest um have that have submitted letters. Um any comments or thoughts?
I'm glad I don't have to make a decision.
I know.
Four great candidates.
I know, four great candidates.
That was honestly clear, what I was thinking too, was just how wonderful it is to have people
Yeah.
out of the blue say, yeah, I love the library, yes, I wanna advocate for it, yes, I wanna be part of it, so.
And they all have great experience.
They have wonderful experiences, yeah, yeah.
It's never really got through the fourth, I said, well, we can't really go wrong here, it seemed to me.
Right, that's true.
Yeah.
Right, right. Um so we have two people who have um had experience working with a library.
Hmm, yeah.
Um and two who are just very um just interested and support the library. I know Patricia Segerson has been very involved with the Friends and um helping out with the annual book sale when we had an annual book sale, um very hard worker.
I have to say, Pat, I noticed a long time ago at board, at Friends board meeting, she asks very relevant, incisive questions. She's a good thinker.
She is, she's a good thinker. And Mo Bouvier obviously is very familiar with the library, very involved.
Um and and I will say that um Mo is very keen to um to promote um more cooperation and coordination with the three boards, with the Friends, with the trustees, and the foundation, so that we're not so scattered um in in our in our efforts. Um so I I know that's one thing he's he's very keen to do, is to be more collaborative, um which makes makes sense. You know, one of the things he'd like to do is um have an annual report which encompasses all three boards. Um so that the community really understands what every, what everybody does and um and and what each board's achievements are, so that's. I think one of Mo's strengths is just the very many organizations in the Worcester area. He's been associated with it, so he brings a lot of sort of organizational wisdom. Oh gosh. Oh yeah. Other foundations as well. Yeah. Yes, he's um well-connected.
I don't, I don't really know the other two, so I can't make any comment. I do know Mo and Patricia, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's where I'm torn too, is it, do we, do we um offer this to somebody that we already know? Or do we try to expand our circle and put more, get more people in, I mean it's it's there's no answer to that question.
No.
Yeah.
There is.
'Cause I was looking at Ellie and she has like a human resources background.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I go back to diversifying.
Diversifying?
You know, it, you'd almost wanna have an interview before you would make it, again, take a chance on somebody you don't know at all.
Yeah.
You know, we have two people you know well. Right.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not asking people to come in and meet with us, and that would, that would really make things a lot easier.
Yeah, yeah, I mean when the. Thing to remember is that this is just
It's temporary.
A temporary position, they have to run
Yeah.
um in a year, and then probably if they wanna stay with it, they have to run again the following year, so.
That's true, they do, yeah.
Yeah, so it's um it's better work for for them.
Did I hear correctly from you, Priya, that Mo was only interested in it for two years, he wasn't thinking of it as a long-term? Never, is that my imagination?
I think he had expressed that.
Yeah, so it would be a temporary fill-in in.
Yeah, well whoever it is would be for a year and then they'd have to run.
But then they get the incumbency, that helps you win.
They do, they do, yeah, yeah.
But if he wouldn't be interested in the incumbency.
Yeah.
As you. Yeah. But I would say that is not a given, because I was not. Yeah. I was, I, I was not elected after I filled a, an unfulfilled term. Oh, you were just gonna do that?
Really?
You weren't?
Yeah. Yeah. See, I, I was elected after I filled an unfulfilled term, yeah, so.
But you stayed with it.
You never knew, I guess I was persistent.
What, what's your take while we have your opinion of like having, having the crossover? I mean, I I feel like the role that you have played with the foundation, between the foundation and the sport has been important, so if we, we wouldn't have that.
Right, now, I I I I do think it's important to have um someone who has connection to.
Like I feel like he would step most closely into your shoes, given that it's your term that, I don't know if that's relevant.
Well, so I think that's on board base.
You know, I mean, I just, in terms of when I read these, I was like, this is fabulous that we have all these wonderful
Yeah.
interested people, and I do hope that they will run and be involved and continue to be involved the way they have been.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
But that was my feeling of like the alignment with what you've been doing, because each month when you're able to fill us in about the foundation has been really helpful, and how how do we, like, would Priya report on that if we don't have?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just very capable.
I know Priya's always, always been an advocate of um having someone that's on um, you know.
Both.
Both boards, yeah. Is is that part of the board's um fond, you know, fundee documents, they have them? No, no. No, no.
Okay, well, why don't we think about it some more, it sounds like people um maybe are leaning in that direction. And what we can do is prior to our meeting with the board, just kind of put our heads together a little bit more. Um I did speak with one of the candidates, she had some questions, so the conversation was very thorough and asked very good questions. And the um the other person that we don't know had a follow-up question for me. So I I do get the impression that everyone is quite interested and invested and involved in through with this, but I think that that's a great start and hopefully, as you said, April they'll continue on if
Mm-hmm.
if they aren't selected this time around. Certainly thank them for their interest. People comfortable with that, just kind of getting together a little bit before? And I'll I'll communicate with you when that will be, but I, they, the selectman meet, the select board needs um
You need the same due.
the same Tues- on Tuesday, so it'll probably be some Tuesday mid-May that we'll be doing this.
Okay.
Good.
That's right, when town meeting is too, I think that's sort of middle week.
Yeah.
But we, we're off Tuesday, we must be off Tuesday, 'cause the select board is always at town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to somehow make it work, we will. Okay, people, so people okay with that, with that proposal? Yeah, okay. All right, um next is to talk about approving the sale of author's books.
Um yes, so we've received a few requests from um local authors. Uh different, their programs are at different times, June, July, and August, but I thought I would just give you all the details. Um Ronnie LeBlanc is one, one author, he's done a program on expedition weight foot. I think he did with the, with the senior center or something. And I, and his program is scheduled for June twelfth here, but he would also like to sell his book, Ronnie LeBlanc. Ulkima, I can give you all the names at any time and share this. Um then there is a local author named Janice Daly, and she's written a book called The Unlocked Path, An Examination and Celebration of Family History, which is a combination of genealogy and um, you know, she had researched her own family history, but she's written a fictional book based on some of the things she learned, so.
Hmm.
That's a local author, Janice Daly. And then the third author is Madi Gitlin, he's written books about the Red Sox. He's presented here before about Red Sox Nation, and his program is scheduled on August tenth. Uh he would like an opportunity to sell his books. And then his uh fourth author is Tom Agracià, um that is on August seventeenth, he's going to be presenting. These are the four authors.
Is Janice Daly gonna be presenting here?
Yes, July eleventh, Janice.
Uh-huh. Oh, okay, I missed it, I missed the date, okay.
Why, I must, we allow them to sell books at their presentations.
Sure, yeah.
Second up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um and lastly, to review and act upon requests to set up donation, a donation box and flyer for an Eagle project.
Yes, uh this is a young man named uh Atarva Mahajan. He's uh with Troop Two Hundred and Fifty, and what he wants to do is uh have a couple donation bins, donation boxes at the library, and collect personal care kits. You know, stuff like hand sanitizer, toothpaste, toothbrush, shampoo, et cetera. And he is going to uh give these kits to the Church of Saint Michael's on the Heights, and they will uh I guess donate it to people who need them. And he would like to have two boxes in the library for two weeks, starting on May first.
I think it's a good idea.
Sounds good. Is he a Shrewsbury, we may have some policies on this, is he a Shrewsbury resident?
He is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Where would you envision the boxes being placed?
I, I was thinking one right near the entrance, but you know, we have the Toys for Tots during the holidays, so something like that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And uh maybe one in children, in the children's room, or uh we'll maybe decide.
Is he gonna give suggestions as to what to donate?
He's going to create the flyer about what he wants and what he would like people to donate, et cetera.
Okay. So this project?
I think Saint Michael's is in Worcester. Saint Michael's in the Heights, I think it's, I think it's in Worcester, yeah.
Yes, but just in Worcester.
In that familiar way.
Around, around like where consi-, in the area where Consigerman is, Consigerman College.
Oh, in that, in that area, okay.
Yeah, I think that's where it is.
You said on the heights, and then it is high, or Consigerman is?
It's up there.
Something by elevation in there.
I mean, it's a topographical definition.
I think it's, I think it's off Burncoast Street, if I remember correctly. Like before you head down into Consi- Consigerman community, it's on one of the streets there.
Yeah.
There's Seven Hills.
Yeah, exactly.
What do people think?
Kind of hard to argue with, isn't it?
No.
I know.
Yeah.
Especially if it's gonna go to a church in Worcester, you know, I'm sure the need is probably here too, but probably greater.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice to support a local um Eagles scout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's only for two weeks, it sounds like. All right, does anyone wanna make motion?
I move to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think that's it for this.
I have a quick question, I forgot to.
I don't think that I did not include in this. Um the summer reading uh prizes, usually the board approves uh state aid funds for that, fifteen hundred dollars, five hundred for children, teens and adults, so it's one reading.
Sorry, this is the summer reading program?
Summer reading prizes.
Yeah.
Yeah, prizes.
Prizes.
Yeah, programs are approved by the Friends, you know, prizes.
Yeah.
We use the state.
I move, we approve it.
Second, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Crystal, you got something?
Um I just had a quick question about the window in the front, which looks like it's fixed.
Uh.
Oh, it's fixed with plexiglass.
But everyone's like, no, it's temporary. Okay, looks really good.
It's plexiglass. It looks amazing.
I haven't even looked at it really.
That's plexiglass?
They did a very good job of.
You would never.
Yes, you you wouldn't know the difference.
So is it, is that staying, or is it?
No, I hope not.
Okay.
But they would have to replace the full glass. It can't be done like this, naturally.
The little, okay.
So.
What happened to the, I'm I'm out of this loop.
Yeah, me too.
To the window.
It was a Friday afternoon activity.
It was a.
It was a.
Oh, say no more.
It was an, it was an accident. I wasn't, I was here the next.
Wasn't intentional, but it happened.
Not intentional, but there were young kids playing with the water bottle, playing catch.
Oh dear.
Going and catching a water bottle.
Hit the window.
And there was a kid standing on top of the steps and a child downstairs, down below, and they threw the ball uh and it hit the window.
Yeah, but I mean, even that should not be really done here.
Yes.
No.
No.
Definitely.
That was a very old window, right?
Oh, sure, so that makes it hard to replace, yeah.
Yeah, it's got all that griddlework there.
It's like all the lead in, you know.
Oh, yeah.
But at least for now, it's temporarily.
It's temporarily patched up.
Well, they picked up pretty quickly, so thanks, thank you for the, for the.
Yes. Yes, within like a week, I think. Anyway, well done, because you could've fooled me.
Okay, anything else for you?
Nothing else.
Thank you. So our next meeting will probably be one in mid-May, and again, I will let you know, but our next monthly meeting is May twenty-third. And we will have a new board member at that time anyway, because election day is next week.
How many people are running?
Um.
Three for three, three people for three spots.
Yeah, pretty good, yeah. So.
And and who is the new candidate, the, Barbara Trudell?
Um Barbara Trudell, Trudell.
Barbara, yeah, don't know, don't know who.
Who else is up?
Lisa.
It's me and, oh Lisa's.
Elisa, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I know Barbara, she's
Yeah.
Yeah, she um she's created that whole program for girls
Yeah.
that goes to Africa.
Yeah. Days for girls.
Days for girls, she's, yeah.
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 Good supporter of the library.
Yes, yeah, I do know who she is.
You're welcome.
So three for three, oh, that's good.
Yeah, that's good. Well, once again, thank you, John.
No, you're welcome.
Yes.
Boy, you make me. My very great pleasure.
I know, you make me feel old when you tell me the year I came. Never would've guessed that, but I'm glad.
No, not post-bife fast when you're having fun.
I remember running, because I was the assistant principal at Shrewsbury Middle School, and I wanted to have the connection. Little did I know.
Boy, do you have a connection.
Little did I know what it would lead to, but I mean, I wanted the connection that the library knew the schools, and the schools knew the library.
Right, so valuable.
It is, yeah, exactly.
So valuable. So valuable.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess we'll adjourn for tonight and we'll see each other again.
I'll stop watching you now on TV.
In May, yet not before.
We hope so.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I wanna hear the strategic plan, that's for sure.
You know exactly what's going on.
So are we, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.